Oh. I must have turned it off after I turned it on. Thank you. So, six thirty, we opened the meeting and we said the pledge of allegiance. Roll call. Commissioner Huggins. Commissioner Devoines.
Present.
Commissioner Freiberger.
Present.
Commissioner Fatisi called in absent. And he is not online. Commissioner Jasper.
Present.
Commissioner Sexton.
Present.
Commissioner Farnett, present. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes from September seventeenth meeting? And do we have any comments about the minutes?
These are Nicole's first minutes, so how'd she do?
Maybe that's why we're so silent, we can't find anything.
My only question was, it says, like, public hearing open at three seven, close at seven oh three. But there were nobody intended, so I just wondered why it was open for over twenty minutes.
So, that one, we were trying to figure out what the best way to go about that one was because, on record, we did close the hearing at that time. Typically, the way we would do it is open it, is there anyone in attendance? No, then close it. But we opened it, is there anyone in attendance? Went through our full discussion, then closed it. Because that's on record, we figured it would be best to put the official closing time on there. Even though it kind of shows, it does read a little strangely.
Is it best to not even open it if there's nobody here or up there?
It's best to still open it.
So this is the correct way?
Yeah.
So it takes a minute to go through the introduction and realize no one's here and close it?
Best way to go about it, open up the hearing, recognize that there's no one in attendance, close the hearing, just so that you go through the motion of saying, yes, we did provide an option for the public to make comment if they were present.
Okay.
And then staff report.
And then staff report, yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you, Commissioner Devoines, for noticing that. Anything else? Looks pretty darn good. Can I get a motion then if no one, oh, unless you want to read it a little bit more? You always find something.
Good job. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of, oh, hang on here.
September seventeenth.
September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, as written.
Commissioner Freiberger makes a motion to approve the minutes as written. Do I get a second?
I second.
Commissioner Jasper, second sat. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. It's unanimous, at six thirty-four, we approve the minutes. Next up, general public comments. Now, there is no, no one here and no one online, so there'll be no general public comments, unless you have something.
We also did not receive any written comments.
Okay, so at six thirty-four, we tried to open it, didn't work, so six thirty-four, it's closed? Okay. So, public hearings, there isn't any. We're going right through this meeting fast. Good thing, because you've got a lot on the agenda. So unfinished business. First up, proposed amendments to chapters twelve point four zero and seventeen point five zero Cedro Wully Municipal Code to update tree standards.
All right, so we have brought this one back to Planning Commission a few times now. In our discussion last month, there was a bit of concern about how the nuisance tree notification and abatement process would proceed. And so we felt that it was best to include language in twelve dot forty dot one thirty. In that subsection A, at the very last sentence, it says, "The city may abate the nuisance as outlined in eighteen dot forty Cedro Wully Municipal Code, and the cost shall be assessed to the adjacent property owner." If you had a chance to read through eighteen dot forty, I attached it to the Planning Commission meeting packet. And that outlines the abatement process that code enforcement already follows. So we felt it would be unnecessary and perhaps it could create some discrepancies if we created a whole new notification for nuisance abatement process for street trees on their own. So we decided to specifically, specifically mention eighteen dot forty Cedro Wully Municipal Code and follow that process for nuisance abatement. That was the only change to street trees since the previous meeting.
I saw that you added the option for... I saw that you added the option for giving them notice and letting them remove it at their own expense prior to, so yeah, so I saw that those updates were in there as well.
Great.
Okay, so recommended actions, review the revisions to the proposed amendments. Propose any suggested changes or recommend the amendments undergo a public hearing during the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. So should we just keep it going here if anyone has more comments or?
Yeah, unless anyone has any other discussion points. Make it clear, we're ready to prepare, or staff are ready to prepare for a public hearing in the next meeting.
And then, just as a reminder, there were some requested changes to title or chapter seventeen fifty for landscaping. Just wanted to reiterate that those changes will be a separate municipal code update.
Okay. So, does anyone have any further comments? Questions?
I thought that referring to the code enforcement section, you know, pretty handily addressed what we had discussed at the last meeting, so I'm good with it.
Okay. Well, do we make a motion here to approve it as is and recommend a public meeting then? Or do we have to close the discussion or what?
I wouldn't approve anything yet, just make a motion to...
To go ahead with the public meeting?
Task staff with preparing for a public hearing.
Okay, and that would be a motion and a second and all that? Do we have a motion to recommend we move on to the public meeting next month on this topic?
I motion that we move on to the public meeting for next month.
Okay, Commissioner Sexton makes a motion to have a public meeting on this next month. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Huggins, second sat at six thirty-nine. Oh, all in favor of going to a public meeting next month on the tree subject?
Can I just clarify that that's a public hearing?
Pardon?
Can I just clarify that that's a public hearing?
Public hearing, public hearing, sorry, public hearing next month. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So that passes at six forty. Moving on to the next topic, unfinished business, proposed amendments to Title seventeen Cedro Wully Municipal Code to update residential parking standards.
Okay, Woody, I have a presentation for this one.
There it is.
Great, so this change to our residential parking standards is pretty broad. It covers all of the parking standards for all residential uses in Cedro Wully. And there's a lot of red lines on the attachment that I provided, a lot going on, so I thought it would be helpful to present this information in a present, a slide deck. So, if you want to move on to the second slide. The purpose for these updated residential parking standards is we've had both city council come to planning staff, as well as concerned citizens that live in multifamily structures approach us and let us know that residential and visitor parking, particularly for multifamily structures, is inadequate for the amount of vehicles that they are seeing park in their parking lot. And one of these reasons that we speculate is that the cost of housing is rising and in response, many households are choosing to move into smaller dwelling units to be able to combat in this economy. And one other thing that we wanted to, well, so as I mentioned in the previous Planning Commission meeting, is Spokane, as well as many other cities in Washington and across the United States are eliminating parking standards or reducing parking standards or are, or just reducing the requirement for parking for multiple reasons. One of those reasons is for increased land capacity to build affordable housing, to increase the supply of housing, to bring down the overall cost down. And so that's one of the primary arguments for why we're, why we're requiring a parking maximum for pedestrian areas to make sure that we don't find ourselves depending on automobiles and that we have a well-balanced system of transportation. If you want to move to the next slide. I did take a look at about eight to ten different cities in the region across four counties, Watcom, Skagit, Snohomish, and Island. These are the three cities closest to us, and these are the parking standards for residential uses that they have. I do think that Mount Vernon reduced their single-family residence duplex and townhome requirement, not too sure about that. So these are the requirements that were outlined on July twelfth, twenty twenty-four, so it is a little outdated. As you can see, most or all of these cities use decimals in one way or another, and Anacortes uses a funny system, I'll say, that have a range, and one point six to two point five is, you know, you usually see an even half or an integer for the parking number. So that's one thing I wanted to point out, is that Anacortes does do a range instead of setting a requirement. If you want to move to the next slide, Woody? So, the overall changes to parking requirements, these changes are going to apply to all the residential uses that we have in the city. So, when a minimum parking requirement is a fraction of a number, that number will be rounded up, even if it's nine point two five, even if it's point two, yeah, point two five in any way, or point five, or point seven five, it's going to be rounded up. We've also added a requirement for visitor parking for all residential uses except for accessory dwelling units, single-family residences, and duplexes. And the amount of visitor parking is going to be determined by each zone that those structures are located in, and we'll get to those requirements on the next slides. I just want to reiterate that there are no proposed changes for non-residential parking, this is only residential. And instead of determining our parking requirements based off of, just, okay, you have one dwelling unit, okay, you are required to have two parking spaces, we're going to start requiring it based off of the dwelling unit type and the bedroom count, so that we can better prescribe parking requirements for smaller dwelling units compared to larger dwelling units. Not every dwelling unit is going to be adequately served by two parking spaces. If you can move to the next slide, please? So this is going to dive into chapter seventeen dot thirty-six. This is going to be off-street parking and loading. This is applicable currently in the R one, R five, and R seven zones, and part of this municipal code amendment will be requiring R fifteen to also comply with the parking standards in seventeen dot thirty-six. For R one, R five, R seven, and R fifteen, the visitor parking requirement will be one visitor parking stall per six resident parking stalls. So I would just want to make it clear that this isn't per six residential units, it's parking stalls. So the amount of parking stalls could fluctuate, it's not going to be based off the dwelling unit count. And then, as I mentioned, there are currently separate parking requirements for R fifteen, those will be eliminated, assuming that these municipal code amendments are approved, and R fifteen will follow seventeen dot thirty-six now. Can you move to the next slide, please? So, this is outlining the requirements in seventeen dot thirty-six. You'll notice that ADUs, no changes to ADUs, no changes to duplexes with one or zero bedrooms. However, duplexes were increased to, I'm sorry, duplexes with two or more bedrooms were increased to three parking stalls. We also increased townhomes, townhomes with one or fewer bedrooms is increased to one point seven five, and townhomes with two or more bedrooms is increased to two point five. And then in the other table, you'll see the required parking for apartments and single-family residences. Just a reminder, single-family residences are not required to provide visitor parking, but single-family residences and apartments will now both be determined, their parking requirements will now both be determined based off of the amount of bedrooms in them. And so those are outlined in the table. Any questions on this table?
I have a question. So we were saying you're going to round up if it's a decimal. So on the old, for like townhomes, one or fewer bedrooms, it says the old required off-street parking is two, but the new standard is one point seven five? Why not just round it up to two?
So, the idea behind that is, let's say that we have four townhomes, because townhomes are usually built in sets like that. The requirement is, if we follow the old standards, would be eight dwelling units, and I can't do the math off the top of my head, but I think that's seven parking stalls now if we, with the new update. So it's just, we're slightly reducing that parking because we don't want to have that over-expansion of asphalt. We don't want to have extensive impervious surfaces, but we still want to provide adequate parking. So the intent behind that was, it was a slight enough reduction that parking won't be eliminated, but we can still maybe save some ground in reducing the overall asphalt.
So we're reducing asphalt, but the goal is to provide more parking?
Correct, it's a tricky balance that we are trying to sort through.
Okay.
So in that example you just gave, would there be one park, one guest parking? Or does that not count?
So, in the example I gave, with the new regulations, it would be seven parking stalls for four townhomes. Then, with the new parking regulations, we would require one for six resident parking stalls, so that would be two. You would have...
One per six. Oh, because the six, and then there's one extra, so that's two spots. Okay, so it'd be nine altogether.
Correct.
Yeah, got it.
When I read this, I had a hard time understanding half of the bucket face. I think I now understand, if you have four townhomes, you must find out by one point seven five, and then round that number up.
Exactly, yeah, that's the intent moving forward, assuming this is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, we can, of course, answer plenty more questions later, but if you can move to the next slide, please? I think you went backward. Thank you. So, this table is diving into the mixed commercial zone as well as the transitional mixed commercial overlay zone. There's very minor updates to this, we're just trying to increase parking for studios in two bedrooms. There were no changes to parking for commercial or industrial uses in those two zones, just for residential, and the visitor parking requirement would be the same. So the updates in these two chapters are pretty minimal. We're just trying to standardize a scale of parking based off of the bedroom count. Next slide, please? Okay, so the changes to the urban village mixed-use overlay zone are going to be slightly different. We did increase residential parking requirements, and we added the same amount of visitor parking requirements as before. But we're also adding parking maximums. So if you have a resident, developers cannot exceed this parking maximum if they choose to do so in the future with their residential developments. And so the intent behind this is that a parking maximums encourage pedestrian-scale urban design, which is outlined in the intent of the urban village mixed-use overlay zone. And the sub-area plan for this zone does specifically state, "The UVMU will provide for more efficient use of resources, providing for an integrated mixed-use site plan to include walkability and reduce dependence on motorized vehicles." So that purpose is already outlined in our comprehensive plan, that this is supposed to be a pedestrian-scale zone. Next slide, please? So this table dives into the parking requirements for the UVMU. You'll notice the similar format to the previous tables, but now there's a third column in orange. That third orange column is going to be your maximum parking. So parking for any of those dwelling unit types cannot exceed what is outlined in that orange column. The changes here match similarly to the previous, to the previous requirements you've seen, but of course, we can adjust these numbers as you see fit to better match, yeah, to better match what you guys feel is the intent of the UVMU. I'll let you just take a second to read this, and then maybe we can dive into some questions for the UVMU.
We have the same thing on our handout, right, in our materials?
Yes, it's in your packet.
Okay.
I can move on to the next slide, if there are no questions? Yeah?
Guest parking doesn't apply, right?
There is visitor parking in the UVMU. I didn't include it on this table because there was already a lot of information on there, but it would be the standard, one visitor parking stall per six.
Six, okay. Oh, yeah, that was on there, yep.
Okay. Woody, if you could go to the next slide, please? Okay, the central business district is going to be the most complicated zone that we'll be working through for parking. So parking right now is currently separated into two different classes, I'll call them. So regardless, parking is only required for new construction in the CBD. There is, there is a, we call it a historic zone, we've also called it a blue line district, but in this central business district, there is an interior section that is outlined that is supposed to have more stringent regulations regarding historic character. It's supposed to be reduced parking in that area. That's our old town, our historic area that we're trying to preserve. So that is going to be what you'll see on the left. That is the reduced residential parking for mixed-use structures with eleven or more residential units. If they have ten or fewer residential units, currently, they aren't required to provide parking. That is also on the table for discussion, though, if we want to pursue that.
Yes.
No, residential parking, no parking is required. Yes. On the right, you're going to see, on the exterior of this historic or blue line district that I'm mentioning, this is going to be, on this exterior, multifamily use is permitted as a standalone use. However, there are, there is a limitation between two and four dwelling units in that area. And so that is going to be what we'll see on the right. So on the left, the reduced parking for mixed-use structures in the interior of the historic district, we're going to see no changes to the minimum parking requirement. We are going to see the required addition of visitor parking, and we are going to see an addition of parking maximums to create that pedestrian-scale urban design feel. For standalone structures, there's going to be an increase to minimum parking requirements as well as the addition of a parking maximum and visitor parking requirements. One thing I do want to note, though, is on the interior historic district area, visitor parking is reduced. So it's one visitor parking spots, one visitor parking spot per ten residential parking spots. So there's a, there's a smaller requirement there. And in the exterior, it's the standard six that we've seen in the other zones. Next slide, please? All right, so here are the tables for those two zones. Once again, on the left is mixed-use development in the interior, on the right is residential standalone on the exterior. There are very minor changes in regards to the required amount of parking. We're just kind of, we're increased, doing a slight increase for the exterior section so that we have a sequence that's growing from one point five to two point five, three to four. But the biggest change in the CBD is going to be that requirement for residential parking. Okay. If you want to go to the next slide, Woody? This is going to be parking for residential uses in our industrial zone. We do permit residential use for work-live units in the industrial zone, so that is where this is coming into effect. One very minor change, we're just increasing two-bedroom to two point five, as well as requiring visitor parking at the rate of one visitor stall per six resident parking stalls. Once again, no changes for industrial parking. Next slide, please? So, a general overview of the red lines in the attachment that you've guys received is that residential parking is now determined based off the dwelling unit type as well as the bedroom count. We have increased the parking for the majority of dwelling unit types, there were some slight reductions, as you guys saw. We've added visitor parking requirements for all residential uses except ADUs, duplexes, and single-family residences. Parking maximums are established for the UVMU and CBD, as those, both of those zones have outlined in either the municipal code or the comprehensive plan, that those are intended for pedestrian-scale design and reduce dependency on automobiles. And lastly, no changes to parking outside of residential use. Next slide. All right. Went through that a little fast.
Nice presentation, though.
Yeah, thank you, Ashton, that was great.
Do we have any overarching questions to these changes? Danielle?
So, back up to seventeen thirty-six thirty, which, when I was looking at the code, seems to not, I guess what I'm thinking of is maybe we need a little clarification, because it seems like it's just, it's titled off-street parking and loading, and doesn't really specify commercial versus residential zoning, I guess? And so when the table was added into item C there, because it used to say all housing other than the above to per dwelling unit, and now we have a table breaking it down, this kind of, how it read to me is that then you're looking at this except for... This kind of, how it read to me is that then you're looking at this except for, um, I'm assuming this means residential zoned dwelling units, you see what I mean? Because then we go on and make the specifics in all those other zones which are very different than what is here. So is that only confusing to me, I, or?
No, that, that makes sense to me now that you pointed out. I've just, I had always, I mean, this was how, um, the code was written when I first joined, so I was, that's how I'm used to seeing it written, but that does make sense.
So maybe if we can just add residential, all o- other residential zoned, uh, housing than the above or something like that? I, I'm open to suggestions on a better phrasing.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can wordsmith it, but something along the lines of all housing in residential zones or all housing in these zones and list them out.
Yeah, because otherwise, something you encounter a lot in codes like these is you read one part and if you don't know about the fifteen other places that are different then, and you stop here, you'd be like, oh, so I'm looking at my residence in the CBD or something like that and then thinking this applies when it does not, because you have to go to the CBD for those specific, um, regulations.
Yeah, very good point.
In that same section, it says housing reserved for persons sixty years of age and older. Is there such a thing?
There is.
I've never seen it advertised that way. I know that's not one of the changes, uh, that I just see.
Yeah, no, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to think back, because we've only had one senior housing type of development since I've been here for three years. So I'm trying to think if that one even applied, because I'm thinking of Brickyard Park. They're a fifty-five plus, so technically doesn't fall into the sixty years of age older. And they were required to have, they were done through a PRD, so they have two parking stalls for each unit. So I'm sure if someone wanted to do specifically senior housing for sixty years older, then this one would apply. That's, um, yeah, that's something I haven't come across yet in my time here at Cedar.
Okay, just a curiosity thing.
Yeah.
On, on that same note, I know it's a little bit, um, beside the point, but item B, I was wondering how we specify in a group home like specific bedrooms or whatever and who's using them. I didn't think we got that detailed when it came to that, it's not like you put a, a deed restriction saying one bedroom, as far as I know.
Yeah, group homes, we do have a very specific definition for that. It's, it's specific but also intentionally broad. It's kind of a strange definition, but it really, it gets at, you know, um, the intent is to house people who need a little bit more supervisory care than the average adult would. So there's a lot of things that kind of fall into that category and so, and we do have some specific regulation on parking for those and other things as well, but.
It just seems that unless it was specifically written into the approval, which I guess is possible for a group home, once you've permitted it, even if they intended to have, uh, one younger than sixteen-year-old person in there and then, you know, the, the other categories here, how would that, how would you police that? I know we're not looking at that right now, but we might want to in the future if that's maybe a really specific and unenforceable. Ashton, I, I did have, um, kind of a, a query. Are we going to, if, if the planning commission is largely okay with this as it's written and it goes to council? Is it just kind of a see if it sticks sort of thing? Because council's direction was to increase and yet we are slightly reducing parking requirements on a couple of units.
As far as seeing whether it sticks or not, I'm not too sure. That might be something I discuss with city council. But yes, there are some slight reductions to the parking requirements for some dwelling units. That is intended to make sure that the, uh, required parking is a, a scale up for the bedroom count. So there were some reductions to match that scale as well as the parking maximums that I mentioned for the pedestrian intended zones.
Okay, that makes sense to me now, I was kind of wondering why slight reduction, but explaining it as a scale then makes sense, so, okay.
Yeah, and then those slight reductions were for dwelling unit types that are usually found in larger developments, so a larger mixed use building or apartment building or a, a row of townhomes. And the, the amount of units that are in there should require enough parking for that slight reduction to be offset, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
And I just wanna add too, I think by rid, or increasing the frequency when visitor stalls are required too, will kind of help to offset that. Even though you are providing, for your smaller developments, you're providing less parking for the residents, it's enough for the residents there, but then you're kind of offsetting in the case that you do have maybe an excessively large family for some reason, and you still have a little bit of extra parking there too. Because I think the current standard is like one for eight units or something like that?
Current standards fluctuate between the zones, there's, the most common one I've seen is one per six, I've also seen one per eight. And it's, uh, units, not parking stalls, is that standard.
The, um, the part about when the required amount of parking stalls for residential units is a fraction or a whole number, you know, yada, yada. That's good and clarifying, but I think you have it in here about six or eight times, and I was just wondering, and that, maybe that's necessary, but would it be better if you just had it at the beginning or something? In all cases, this is the deal, or just, just a thought. If it's required to be in each segment, that's great, but.
Yeah, my concern with including it in each different segment was each of these chapters, they, as Danielle was mentioning, we are outlining different parking requirements in each of those zones. And I just wanted to make sure that this one part of the requirements where we're rounding up is applicable in all of the zones.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Also in your slideshow, every once in a while, we'd see a handicap spot and I don't see, is that a different category of parking?
Yeah, um, parking, or handicap parking isn't addressed, the, at least the requirements for handicap parking aren't addressed in this update, but we do have those, uh, established parking, ADA accessible parkings in a separate section, I wanna say seventeen dot thirty-six dot oh fifty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's towards the end.
That's addressed somewhere else, okay.
Could, could we go over, um, you, cause you went through the slides so quickly. Could we go over the ADU part of it again? Cause it looked like there was an exemption for, for ADUs and I'm a little concerned, let me, give me my concern and then, and then you can do it. But, um, my concern is that, uh, so we're turning R5s into R18s if everybody builds out, but we're reducing the parking requirement. And I mean, I've been in Seattle for years and just with the complying and non-complying ADUs that are in some of the places, like up on, uh, Pill Hill, Capitol Hill there. It's, it's dreadful trying to find parking in, in places like that when I've gone to visit people there. And so I'm, I'm wondering why we're reducing, I mean, I understand why we're doing it, but, but we're just creating a problem that has existed forever and we have the chance to not make the same mistake, but we're setting ourselves up to make the same mistake for an idea that probably eventually will come true, but, but may not be. It, it might be next year, but it might be twenty years from now when people get out of their cars and, um, and, uh, and, and don't drive them everywhere. And so, um, again, I, I was just curious about the, the, how, how that was structured for the ADUs and the R5 and R7, so.
Yeah, that was a very good point. So, uh, current requirements for ADUs is one parking stall per ADU. There, I'm not proposing a reduction from that one to zero parking stalls. The exemption that you were talking about is they are exempt from, um, supplying visitor parking. So there's no need for visitor parking for ADUs. As you know though, the state legislature now says we need two ADUs, so we could look at, um, increasing the, uh, ADU parking requirement to say two point five or even three for two ADUs. Or however that we wanna do that, but as of right now in this amendment, it is one parking stall per ADU.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I might make a suggestion here. Behind the scenes, we've been working on a draft of an ADU ordinance to get us in compliance with the state requirements. And I remember we had taken a look at the parking requirement for ADUs as well. And there was some stipulation that our legal counsel did recommend to put in there that if you are within a hundred feet, I think, of a transit stop, that you are not required to, uh, put parking.
That was a requirement of the state?
One half mile, one half mile. But yes, yes. So I might suggest we ta- we strike ADUs from this table if we're gonna be changing the ADU chapter to include parking regulations specific to them, so.
So you're saying do a separate thing for, a separate chapter?
Since we have an ADU chapter already and that contains its own specific regulations, I think it might, I mean, maybe we make a reference to ADU parking regulations are found in this chapter or however that needs to look, but I think having everything for ADUs in one place does kind of make sense, since we do it for the other chapters, CBD, U V M U.
So then what that would mean is that, uh, chapter seventeen thirty-six would only address, uh, the residential zones for single-family, townhouse duplex, but ADUs should have to go to the ADU chapter, is that?
Yeah, and we don't, instead of striking it through on this table, I can put, um, parking requirements for ADUs are found in seventeen dot one hundred, or.
Sorry, I, I feel like, I feel like it should be in both places if you're gonna do that, because, um, there are a lot of things that we deal with where it would be nice to have, you know, like fees. Fees are all in the fee section, right, and then they're referred to when you're in the other thing. And I don't care if they're also in the section, other sections for things, but, um, but it'd be nice to have everything in a table right there that you can grab and it's got everything. Same with the parking, it'd be nice to have like you have here in your presentation where all that stuff's right there and you can just look at it and say, oh, I'm in R7, so this is gonna be what I'm gonna be doing. Or I'm in the CBD, this is what I'm gonna be doing. But if you also wanted to reference it in the, in the chapters on, um, on the things, I think that's fine too. I mean, it just, you just have to make sure that when you change it in one place, it gets changed.
They gotta say the same thing.
Both places, yeah. But, uh, you know, uh, I don't like, I never liked codes, that's why I didn't license as an architect. I did a lot of design and building, but I, uh, but I never licensed because I hate codes. Um, and the reason I hate codes is because you are all over the book when you are reading codes. You know, you're here and then you're jumping over here and then you're doing that. And the more you can have it in one place, uh, the easier it is. So at the very least have it in, in both places, so just, just my recommendation.
Yeah, really the only qualm I have with having it in two places is that future staff will need to remember, oh yeah, it's also in that other chapter. And say we make an update to this one, forget the other one, that we have two non-coinciding, um, regulations, so.
Like Ashton said, if you have, um, a reference to the other spot, that helps.
One thing we could do as part of this update is just create a separate table that we can put on our planning department documents website. It won't be put into the code or anything, but a table that just outlines all these requirements, maybe have the zone at the top and then you have the dwelling unit type on the column. We can outline it that way and that way it's, we can have everything in one place, but it's still separated by zoning type in the code.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So that would basically be kind of a helpful handout then, but not codified in that way? If for some reason it didn't get updated, it would still be, we'd still have the fallback of the code, is that, am I correct?
Correct, in that situation, the code would be the binding regulation.
Yeah, the controlling, okay.
That's something that I've always liked doing within our applications, um, is als- in addition to our checklist of submitted requirements, you go through your procedure for permitting and you also go through your, you know, highlights from the code of what's gonna be required to show on your plans, that sort of thing. So that's something we, we like to put together on our applications just to make it very clear to the applicant what's gonna be expected of them. That can be another place, helpful hints, but.
Are parking space requirements spelled out somewhere in another chapter? Like what size they're supposed to be, how much room between them and all that?
So parking space requirements or parking space dimensions, well for one, I'll say compact parking stall dimensions are outlined in the municipal code in a separate section. For non-compact parking stall dimensions, there is an ordinance from the eighties that I've seen our interim city engineer refer to. I've also seen our engineering department refer to the, I think the Department of Transportation's like highways division at the federal level. We've referred to their guiding documents, but, um, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have dimensions for standard parking stalls codified in our code.
Do you think there should be a reference to that?
Personally, I do.
Cause they could make up their own dimensions.
We do review the parking stall dimensions and we do require nine by, nine feet width by nineteen foot length, but, um, that is a point of contention, good phrase.
Oh, did I hit a, something there, nerve? And then space between them, so when you're, when you're backing up, you don't run into the guy behind you.
Yeah, you do need to be very, very particular about what counts as your nineteen foot length, because is that from the curb? Is that from your curb stop? You know, it, it tends to get pretty wild. And, uh, when you're talking about your driveline width, so we just had this the other day doing plan review where there was proposed eighteen foot stalls. They had taken that measurement from the curb and not the curb stop, so technically, in my opinion, that's a sixteen foot long stall. But then I'm looking at their driveline, which is twenty-six feet wide and the requirement minimum is twenty-four, so I'm like, technically it works because they're not gonna be sticking out and impeding the driveline. So, I don't know, these things need to be very, very, very clear and concise in one spot.
Yeah, I do think it's something that we should codify in our code, um, but I would wanna consult with our engineering department about where that would be and what they would wanna see in that code as well.
And you also wanna look at, um, probably it's an online version now, but Ramsey and Sleeper is what architects use. So if somebody's designing, they, they go to, uh, they don't go to the engineering handbook, they go to the architectural handbook, which is Ramsey and Sleeper. And so, um, so you wanna include what they have or at least look at what they have when you're designing them, so.
This probably doesn't have anything to do with code, but the other day I was helping somebody move from an apartment over on, uh, what do you call that? Anyway, in, in town, and, uh, there's no place to help people move, there's no loading zone or anything. And you have to just hope that someone's not gonna be there so you can take their spot. So it's probably nothing that we can do about that, but I guess the more guest spots you have, the better, and take up those spots.
It is smart, though, like having a loading zone for a moving van.
Cause people come and go.
If we were to consider requiring a loading zone for residential uses, would we set a threshold like a minimum dwelling unit count or some sort of, just something to think about, how, when that would requirement would set in?
I'm hoisting it at the flagpole for a discussion. I'm hoisting it at the flagpole for a discussion.
It's a great point, yeah. Because we're creating, with our parking regulations, if we do what we're doing, we're, we're, we're making our parking situation in our city more urban. So, we need to think of the urban things and that's one of them is, is where do you do that? So, it's a great, great thing as well.
Like your Amazon trucks and stuff could...
Exactly. They're coming and going all day, yeah.
Yeah, thinking on Amazon trucks and that sort of thing, I think our required fire department turnarounds and emergency access do well in accommodating for, at least them to be able to get themselves turned around and get to the houses they need to. Multi-family, yeah, I'm thinking on, on loading zones.
I feel like you'd be eating into that pedestrian zone, right? We're trying, you wanna limit the asphalt and that's a big, that's a big parking stall.
It is.
But it also makes sense to have, like, for a large apartment unit. So, maybe, yeah, so maybe it should be based on density of the apartment building.
I'm thinking locationally, too, you know, if we're gonna require one for each building and at what unit count does that apply and that sort of thing. I'm just thinking.
Might be a good idea in theory, but not in practicality.
Trying to get someone moved in, you're gonna want it close to the door and that sort of thing. So, if you have just, you know, one loading zone central, it's not gonna work for everybody.
I'm, I'm thinking that, the city may have a different view on it. But, but I think just, I, I've talked to quite a few Amazon and UPS and those kind of drivers. And I live up on Alderwood Lane and they, they come up and they use the end of my cul-de-sac because they, they're there every day and they're there at the same time every day delivering to people. They're basically like postmen now, they, they run routes. And they use the end of Alderwood Lane because it's quiet up there and there's no restriction. And it's just a, it's just a cul-de-sac, there's no, there's only three driveways off of it and, and there's no restriction. So, they come up there, sometimes they eat lunch there, sometimes they just repack their trucks there, you know, re-move things around so they can get to the next phase of their delivery. But the point I was gonna make was that I can, I could see where, that would be stressful for them to be out and you have no place that's officially set up for you to, to park. But they could easily use fire lanes, like you're saying, as, as where they do their unload, because they're just loading and unloading and then they're out of there. And the same with moving trucks could use fire lanes, too. But they're probably terrified, I mean, they probably do it, but you're, it's like double parking. You know, you're terrified that you're gonna get caught or get a ticket or something for doing that. So, I don't know, is there any way that, that they can be used as fire lanes? Because the fire department only needs them when there's a fire. The rest of the time, they're sitting empty, can those be delivery zones, under the understanding that you gotta move it if, and quickly if, you know, something happens? Just a thought.
I know at the Marina and La Conner, they have signs at various spots, the closest ones to the gates that say thirty-minute unload and load only. And generally speaking, nobody parks there unless they're loading and unloading. So, maybe that's up to the builder to decide to do that or not. But that's, if they're labeled properly, nobody feels guilty about pulling in there and leaving.
Is that example on-street parking or off-street?
That would be off-street. Or on-street, depends on where the place is located, I guess.
This may be an ignorant question, but it's very different for commercial. Isn't a loading spot usually required for commercial? We require that, correct?
Yes, for warehousing, storage, usually it does come into play with industrial-type uses.
And then, do you happen to know the dimensions then of a loading spot versus?
Not off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
No, that, that's okay. I was trying to Google it here and, yeah. Just because I'm thinking, I live in an apartment complex that has multiple buildings and our neighbor was moving and they had their moving truck, you know, parked in one of the, the regular stalls. And it, it wasn't a real long one, so it stuck out in the street a bit and everybody just kind of drove around it and stuff. And when Amazon or, or, you know, UPS or whatever, if they can't find a spot, they'll just kind of like park. There've been once or twice where I was like, I have to go somewhere and I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to get out and I hope I can track down whoever parked here. But for the most part, I think if we're thinking, especially if a loading spot is dimensionally a lot bigger than a regular parking spot, it would be, as was mentioned, very difficult to provide that for every building in a place that would actually work for people anyway. They're, they're gonna park wherever it's closest because they don't wanna have to haul their furniture, you know, halfway down the block. So, even if, like, our, our building is directly across from the management office, which has parking in front of it that's designated for that, and so almost nobody ever parks there unless they're, have business there. And so theoretically, you could use that if you're trying to load or unload. But people don't because it's across the way and you'd have to walk all the way across. So, yeah, I think, I think there would, it would be taking up a lot of space and probably not actually solve the problem.
It'd probably have to be a big complex to come in handy, so. More like a hotel. Speaking of hotels, we have a brand-new hotel on Trail Road. Does that apply to anything? That's, that's their own game?
Wait, does it apply to?
Does that, parking doesn't matter there?
Oh, they have, it's under the building.
A what?
It's under the building.
Under the building?
Yeah.
It's our first under-the-building parking?
Not underground. It's like...
The first floor?
Yeah, covered by the second floor. It's hard to see, but it's there.
So, what do they have, one spot for every room?
I believe so.
It's something like that, covered in code?
Yes, hotels are a commercial-type use and that's a, a separate issue than, than this is. We're not touching commercial parking.
Commissioner DeVoyens?
Maybe I'm not big, I apologize, but as I read the intent for seventeen dot twenty-four dot O five O, I'm sorry, I don't understand what it says. It says, "The, the city is authorized to collect in lieu parking fees." I don't know what in lieu parking fees are, but it is saying that if I have residence in the Central District District, I have to pay a part of my own residence, residence, sorry. If I have a resident in the Central District District, I need to pay the part in my own parking lot. I guess I don't know what in lieu parking fees are. Reading the intent, um, chapter seventeen dot two-four dot O five O.
Yeah, I, I see what you're calling out here and this is interesting.
I have to pay a part of my own parking lot.
In lieu of parking fees, oops, sorry.
So, the way I read this is if someone is trying to do new construction in the downtown, most of the lots in the downtown are very small. And so, creating parking in the ways that we've prescribed in the code can sometimes kill someone's project. So, this allows them an option to pay the city. Instead of providing parking on their site, they would pay a certain amount specified by the city so that the city can come and invest in a public parking lot, essentially. So, where we do the Lagerodeo carvings would be an example of that. And there's one behind the old Wells Fargo Bank as well, on the south side, both city-owned parking lots.
Does the city own that wood carving lot?
Yes.
Oh, nice.
Thank you. I read that over and I can understand what that meant.
Would it be correct to say, though, that we really, we have that language in there as kind of a out? But we don't really have anything in place? Like if somebody came in tomorrow and had this proposal, we don't have a fund, do we? That you can pay into for a lot? Because, I mean, the two lots you talked about, I mean, the Lagerodeo one, I mean, I don't know how often it's used for events, but, you know.
Once a year.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess, I don't know how that would work for...
It's half-full every weekend because of Joy's Bakery.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what the finance mechanism is. I've actually never dealt with that once in my time either, but...
I don't think anybody has.
Yeah, there've been other, other things that have come up. For example, we, we do offer a fee in lieu of providing open space within a subdivision. If, what is it? If your subdivision is fifteen lots or less, you can pay, I think it's fifteen thousand dollars to the parks, uh, fund so that the city can use that to enhance or maintain its city parks. So, we have things like that throughout the code, but I've never seen this used. So, I don't know how it works, but...
Yeah, both of those parking lots date back to the, to the sixties. They were within a year or two of each other. I know the, the one there behind Joy's Bakery by the Cedarly Auto Parts, that, that, that one was when the, when the old dry cleaner burned down and the city, I guess, just bought the lot and, and turned it into parking, so. So, there hasn't been a need or hasn't been an opportunity to raise enough money to buy a piece of land and, and stripe it, so.
Yeah, and frankly, we, we don't have too many undeveloped lots in the CBD. The only ones I can think of, we've got the, the old video store that burnt down, that's a vacant lot. And then there's one on State Street. It's relatively small and it's also got a very strange easement situation, so nobody's wanted to touch it.
Yeah, the only places I can think of are, are along the railroad tracks there at the end of Woodworth and, and maybe the, the old Vern Sims lots would be places where you could do more parking if you wanted to. But it's quite a walk to the main street from there.
I'm not familiar with Vern, Vern Sims.
Uh, that's, that's the north, north side of Ferry, uh, on the west side of the tracks.
By the antique store there?
No, between the railroad tracks and the Chevron at the end of, at the end of Ferry, where it hooks up there by Food Pavilion.
Got it.
The car dealership?
Yeah, the old car dealership.
Yeah, Ford or whatever, always. And then also the vacated railroad tracks, everybody parks there for big events, which is almost a parking lot now.
Be an easy, easy fix. It's already got all the gravel and everything, it's gotta shape it and, shape it, pave it and stripe it and it's good to go. Early in northern, can't do it, it'll never happen, right?
Never mind. Any other thoughts on parking? I did a few scenarios to check it and it looks like you did, really did your homework and, I don't know, the little exercise I did, it looks great. Makes sense.
Good, glad to hear.
Very glad we did not do a, what was it, like Anacortes did, where it was like between this and this? And it's like, well, I'm sure there must be some reasoning there on when you can do one versus the other. Sounds confusing, though. This, at least, you know, with a decimal, it may look a little confusing at first. But when it, you have the language in there, you always round up, then it removes any confusion, so.
I know I, I tried to compare this to, I tried to compare this to my residence. I live in a condo. We have, there are two bedroom apartments and we have two parking spots per unit. So, if that raised to two point two five, we, we were not being coded to this. But I, what I read, um, just, I, to me, just, my initial reaction was, where are we gonna provide all this parking?
I think you get grand, I think you get grandfathered.
Yeah.
So, you're, what's that?
Right, yeah, hopefully we don't have to redo our condo. I'm just...
This is all for new, new build.
Concerned about, I mean, I realize the need for new parking and parking, the issue at our condo, how, I just concerned about real estate and how are we gonna provide all this parking? I don't have an answer. It's just where I, what's my mind that I'm trying to read this?
Yeah, but as Commissioner Huggins was saying, any existing structures, they don't need to provide any more additional parking. Their current parking will just be grandfathered in.
On that note, though, would there be any triggers if there was like substantial remodeling or anything like that? We don't have any language that addresses that at this time.
Uh, no, not yet. In the CBD, we do have that language for new construction only follows the, those parking requirements, but that's about as close as we get to a non-conforming parking situation.
So, the goal here is, should the planning commission recommend that the city council approve? Is that what we're aiming for? Approve and adopt proposed amendments?
Uh, not approve, but just recommend any changes at this time. I'm anticipating one more session for review and then a public hearing, unless you believe that public hearing is ready for next month. I'm under the impression it's not, though.
No. This is... So, tonight's just discussion, okay? On that first page, well, let's see, let me go to the second page. It says, purpose, goal, goal T three, "To benefit social well-being and economic development through street design." Can you maybe explain that to me?
Yeah, so I included goal T three because that is the overarching goal that policy T three dot seven is embedded within. I had just been reviewing previous memos and that was the standard that I had seen was, the goal was outlined first and then if there were any subsequent policies, those were outlined. But mainly, the main reason I, or the main reason why I provided goal T three was... But mainly, the main reason I, or the main reason why I provided goal T three was just to provide some context for policy T three point seven.
Anyone else? Commissioner Jasper, any?
No, sir, thank you.
Anything stand out at, at you there?
Not at this time, thank you.
Well, we can wrap this one up and move on to the next if there's no objections. Do we have to have any?
Motion.
No motions, no nothing.
Do you, do you guys have enough notes on, in, input, know where your direction is? Okay, good.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, then we will close, uh, part two of the unfinished business at seven thirty-nine and move on to number three, proposed amendments to chapter two point nine zero and title seventeen, Cedar Willie Municipal Code to Add Regulations for Cottage Clusters.
All right, so we're back again with cottage clusters. So this, tonight, I just wanted to frame this one as more of a discussion among each other. With the main goals I'd like to achieve tonight is some direction on how we can simplify the code a little bit for both staff to utilize it in the future and for applicants who are looking to do these types of developments. And then again, how can we incentivize the development of affordable cottage cluster housing? So, back on September ninth, Ashton and I attended a North Star meeting. And what North Star is, is it's a, a public and private partnership that unites all the local governments within Skagit County jurisdiction. It's tailored towards achieving solutions for homelessness and behavioral health issues and doing that under one overarching plan that each jurisdiction will follow in its own way, but with goals and policies that are united. So we've been working on the housing crisis together. So the September ninth meeting that we went to was in person and we met with a number of developers throughout Skagit County. And the idea was just to share what each jurisdiction has been working on, within their respective planning departments as far as housing goes, share that with the developers and get feedback from them. Are we on the right track? Are there any gaps that we need to fill? What aren't we thinking about? And, you know, is there ways that, within reason, we can shape these mechanics to better help you help us achieve these goals? So I did, we did share with the folks at North Star, the developers there that were working on the cottage cluster regulations. And a gentleman by the name of Kevin Moss did reach out to us. He's with Glacier Energy and a developer, I think based in Mount Vernon. And he has done cottage cluster development in Bellingham. And he shared with me Belling, or, Anacortes, I'm sorry, Anacortes. He's, he's done cottage cluster developments in Anacortes and shared with me their regulations. So I got a chance to look through those and I did attach them here. I found them very simple to follow. There were some recommendations that I'd put in here that we should take a closer look at from Anacortes's, especially the density regulations. They've got a number of easy to follow things on density, minimum, maximum number of cottages as opposed to trying to figure out your site size and doing all these random little calculations to figure out does it work to fit on site. Have the developer work that out. Then you can, you can kind of set, you know, I think Anacortes, they have it at, you know, you have to have a minimum of three cottages and no more than twelve. We can set those numbers to whatever we see fit, but that makes it very simple for us. They have very specific setbacks and separation between buildings, similar to what we've got put in place, but I figured we could take a look at another example that is doing it right now. Maybe set up a field trip and go take a look at some of their examples that they've got in Anacortes right now. I wanted to take a look at the shared community buildings definition. It's right now, we have a clubhouse density bonus worked into the code. I want to talk about that a little bit, but we don't have a definition put in place for a clubhouse, so what exactly does that mean? Could mean a lot of different things. And so, uh, Anacortes has put together a pretty good definition of their shared community building, which is essentially the same thing, but it kind of branches out from the typical idea of a clubhouse building. So, you know, a community kitchen or a workshop type space, a library, those sorts of things all would fall under the shared community building. So, um, just to take a look at that. Their private open space calculation is much simpler. I think they do four hundred square feet of open space per unit. And so I like the way that they've written it as opposed to the way we have. Ours is a little bit confusing with the ratio. And it's also, I don't think it scales up as well as Anacortes's does because when you do the four hundred square feet per unit, it ensures each unit's gonna have a good buffer of landscaping and have a feel of you've got your own yard space that you can work with as opposed to being cramped in. So, take a look at that. Access and parking is in there. And they've also specified that ADUs are not permitted ancillary to a cottage. So I think, I think that would be smart. I recommend that we do the same. If, you know, the concern is getting over dense, over densification is of concern here, then I think it should be specified that ADUs are not permitted attached to a cottage. Other than that, so I wanted to, I wanted to talk through those so we can take this one step at a time. I know there was a lot in the memo, so if we want to go through Anacortes's regulations, compare it with ours and see what changes we may want to make, we can start there. I did also include in the memo a link to MRSC's page on affordable housing incentives. And I don't know if you guys got a chance to look through and peruse that, but it does have a number of different examples from other jurisdictions that have different strategies to address incentivizing affordable housing outside of, there are, density bonuses are included in that, but I wanted to kind of help us broaden the thinking there on what can we use aside from density bonus if density's not what we want here? So, that's another point of discussion, but maybe we start with Anacortes's regulations
I was impressed with how simple it was.
Like graphics that you added, it kind of helps to visualize the concept.
And I remember when we went, started our, aid, or cottage clusters, not ADUs. We were going from scratch, we didn't have anybody to plagiarize except for, we did a field trip or two and that helped, but having this, you know, really helps.
Yes. And I definitely think if, if we're trying to incentivize affordable housing, we don't need to go down the path of overregulation. When you start getting into the specifics on the design has to be X, Y, and Z and your lot size has to be this dimension and here's your, you know, it's okay to put your setbacks and your landscaping and that sort of thing in, but when you get too into the weeds on things, the developer looks at this and they throw it out the window. They're like, nope, I don't want to touch that, it's way too complicated. You start getting into folks wanting to put some plans out in front of you and staffer going through and redlining everything because your plan set doesn't work and they've got to pay their architects and their designers to go back, edit, edit, edit until they can finally get an approved set. So when you're thinking, okay, this is gonna be an affordable housing project for me, it's not. So overregulation is not the answer. So I like the idea of trying to simplify this. I know we did take a look at, in the design standards, and I apologize, those are not attached here, but we did look at using the design standards essentially copied from what the planned residential developments call for, high quality of design. I'm hesitant on that, just given that we don't go so far to regulate our typical single family housing. So why do it for these, it's essentially a smaller house. You know, that, the specifics in the planned residential development, they're their own animal. So when you're trying to infill within existing neighborhoods, it almost makes it stand out more to me.
I, I'm not against any of these things. I always sound like, I probably play the devil's advocate, so I, I end up sounding like the guy who's trying to just do everything the old way and I'm not. But when you look at the history of planning and city building, all of the problems that cities have come from trying to pack too many people into too tight of spaces. You had people with rickets because they didn't have light, you had people who were sick because they didn't have sewage systems. You have, you know, so the more compact you make, the more, the more you pack humans in, the more it has to be planned. It has to be planned in a serious way. And my concern right now is the state of Washington is just saying, do ADUs, do this, let's pack the people in, but they're not, they're not, they're not providing a mechanism to do that properly and well. We, we are that mechanism and they're expecting us to, to take that and do that at the community level. And so, you know, you don't find a lot of problems with a farm out in the country. You can do, you can build anything you want on a piece of property in the countryside and you're probably, you're not gonna hurt anybody but yourself, you got plenty of parking, if it burns down, nobody else is gonna burn down, all those things. You, you see my point, but, but when you start packing people in tight, you've got to provide park space. You have to make sure that people's windows don't look into each other's houses, you have to do all of these things. And so there has to be a mechanism to do that. And if you leave it up to developers, they aren't gonna care because it's just about making a buck, no matter what they say they're doing. And the people who do care are expensive. Engineers and architects cost money, okay? So, like I said, I'm not against these things, we just have to be real about this, that, you know, when the state sets it up so that you can pack eighteen houses onto, eighteen houses onto an R five zone, that's creating a nightmare scenario. It might not be a nightmare scenario, but you're creating, setting up a nightmare scenario if, if things don't go well or you don't get people who plan well. So anyway, I, I, I want affordable housing, I want all these things, but there, we live in a, we live in a world here in Skagit County and all of Western Washington, we live in a finite space, okay? We have water on one side and we have public lands on the other side. We're in the same situation that places like San Francisco we're in where, you know, you just only have so much space. It's always gonna be expensive to live here. It's just that, that's how it is. If there's going to be affordable housing, it's gonna be through charities, it's gonna be through some form of charity that, that's gonna get it done and it's gonna have to be done well. So I, I'm gonna stop there, but, but I think that the, the benser you build, the more important it is that you have professionals involved in the process of doing it. And that's not because I studied architecture, it's just I've seen what engineers and architects can do versus what the average developer does. Not all of them, there's exceptions to everything, I'm, you know, I'm not a generalist, but, but, but that's, that's what I see from, from my studies and my, my years doing things, so. Anyway, keep that, keep that in mind and we, we've got a plan for stuff.
I couldn't agree more. You said it very well. Thank you for saying that. I feel like sometimes we have a gun at our head though, because they're saying you shall do this even though we don't want to do this, but we will. But, great point, we gotta be careful in what we're doing, doing it right. And I, I wrote in my notes, more dense, more expense, you know? We, we want things to be cheaper, but the more you pack them in, the more expensive it's gonna get. And also what you said about windows. I was part of a, a development up in Canada and they packed thousands of houses in in a short period of time. They were building one to two houses per day for about six or seven years, trying to get everybody into Fort McMurray for the oil fields. And they must have a heck of a good planning commission there because the houses all went in side by side by side by side, five feet apart, but no two windows were, it was like, okay, do that floor plan, but reverse it, do that floor plan, you know? So, and then I remember one time somebody pointed out, they said, look, they, they messed up, they got those two windows facing each other, they can't be doing that kind of stuff. So it's like, wow, how'd they figure all that out? But it reminded me of that when Pat was talking, that we gotta, gotta lay it out right and, I don't know. When you're packing people, and I remember when I was a kid, there was an experiment going on and they said, the, when you put too many mice in a packed situation, they start killing each other, you know? And you look at big cities, that's exactly what's going on. And I love your scenario, if you want something, you know, go out in the country and build what you want, but gotta abolish the GMA to, to get our way. Anyway, I won't, I was just trying to second what you were saying.
I wanted to add, I really appreciated your presentation at the housing forum. When I, so last meeting was my first meeting and hearing about cottage clusters, I had a lot of concerns and I remember sending an email to you afterwards saying, how is it possible for a minimum wage, one earner family who makes thirty thousand a year to be able to afford something? And seeing their slide that a thirty thousand dollar a year household should be able to afford a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar house with ten percent down, which doesn't take into account PMI or so many other expenses as well. It just, I thought, how do you possibly build a house that's only a hundred and forty-eight thousand and I just don't see how it's possible, including land? But I did appreciate your presentation, I love this idea. We know Kevin Moss, I've walked through some of his, or one of his homes, it was just beautiful. And he thinks outside the box, which I really appreciate, I like to encourage, I like the idea of encouraging that. But I also agree that there has to be regulations. There was a, a house he built, it was two, it was in an area that Mount Vernon required two parking, garage parking. And he placed the spots end to end instead of side by side in the house. And it was really fascinating how he put that together. But I obviously have concerns about houses being built on top of each other and safety. Four hundred square foot, my first apartment in college was three hundred ninety-six square foot and that was tight. Thank you.
I believe you're talking about tandem parking, right? Yeah, so, so our code explicitly prohibits that, but, yes, there are a number of creative ways. Kevin has shared some of his floor plans and site plans with me. He's done a great job thinking outside the box, as you say. I'd like to maybe reach out to him for a field trip. I actually mentioned this meeting to him, but life gets busy, yes. Nicole?
Was that you? That was you. Commissioner Fryberg, you first. I was just gonna say, I don't want to hog the mic, so.
Well, well, if you're going down the, the line, I'll wait.
I didn't have anything. I was just admitting that my, I, we have housed the tandem garage, but maybe it's because it's, it's, it's like a shop basically, I don't know if it's in town. I'm, I'm pretty sure the people we bought it from had it, had a permit, but maybe we should look into that. Maybe we bought it, passed inspection. Strike that from the record.
I'm curious, did you get some feedback at that meeting or was it just kind of directing you, oh, maybe you should look at the Anacortes code? Or did you have anybody say, oh, this is overly complex and this will be something that will be difficult to, for developers to get behind?
So I didn't explicitly write it in my memo, but that list at the end, consider simplifying code and the listed items there, those were the things that were brought up. So we should take a look at those specifically. But other things in the, in the code as well.
Well, I, I may be jumping ahead a bit, but actually, you kinda outlined the things that I thought were really great when I read through the, the Anacortes, um, code, but, um, definitely one that, that really stuck out to me, uh, well, it didn't look to me like they, uh, put any, uh, minimum, uh, lot area size. I mean, that was kind of the first thing there, and so they just totally just say, if you can fit it and meet all the other requirements, then that's really, that will li, that will be the limiting factor on how many units you can get. And it, it's very simple, but does the job.
Essentially, yes, yeah, so they, they set the maximum, the number of cottages, and they have set setback regulations and, um, minimum spacing between the units, as well as open space and private space requirements, um, which are two separate things. And, um, yeah, e- essentially, it has seemed to figure itself out.
And then, of course, the setbacks, that was, I felt like it was getting almost too, I, I don't know, like, for a single-family lot, it makes sense to have, you know, your front, side, rear, whatever, but when you're getting into a cluster, it makes sense to have the setbacks be for the entire thing, and the separation is what controls how close they are to each other, and then also potentially that, um, the required front porch that, that, that they had to may, I was reading through it fairly quickly, but, um, yeah.
You can have some protrusions into the setback.
Yeah, 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 and it, it just, it seemed like it, it just naturally kind of policed itself in a way, without having to get so bogged down in so many numbers.
Just curious, in the Anacortes Code, do they allow the cottage clusters in all the different residential zones?
They spell that out, they call them something different here.
Not all of them, but I'm failing to remember which, there's, I think, two that it doesn't.
It's three A, three, three, I don't know, I guess we have to know what their code means.
Mm-hmm.
Is it addressed in the density paragraph?
I'm sorry, maybe not. Did do a whole bunch of. Yeah, it says that one half of a dwelling. Yeah, due to smaller relative size of cottage units, each cottage may be counted as one half of a dwelling unit for the purpose of calculating density. For example, a cluster of six cottages would be equivalent to three dwelling units. That's, uh, what page is this? No, they're not numbered. So for the zoning question, I did make a note of that, 'cause I figured it might come up, so. Anacortes allows cottage housing in all residential zones except residential low-density one, which is their R-one, and Old Town, OT, zones.
Do we have a Old Town?
Central Business District.
Central Business District, okay, but we don't have like a historical district, like Ferry Street, or Talcott, or?
Kind of.
Kind of. Culturally, yes, but not written.
Right, yeah, so we, we do have a historic district, it's not officially codified through ordinance, but that is what it is, it's not, um, identified as such, really, but as a spatial area it is, as our historic downtown, so, um, for certain design standards, certain things apply there and not in others, um, certain uses apply there and are not permitted in others, for example, uh, within the historic downtown area, you have to have commercial ground floor in all cases when you're going to build, um, mixed use. You can do residential above and behind, but you have to have commercial facing the street frontage, uh, outside of that area, however, you can do standalone multifamily up to four units. So it, it's more of a spatial, yeah, spatial thing, but, um, and parking. If we could go through Anacortes Code and pull out some things that you would like me to take a stab at changing within our code, that would be helpful to me.
Well, I definitely wanna see a similar setback. Yeah. Setback and separation, which is also on your list of items that were suggested. As well as a definition for the, um, clubhouse. I actually kind of like calling it something else besides clubhouse, because to me, clubhouse, maybe it's just my association sounds very ritzy, and, um, like, for a high-end, um, community or something, and, and the idea of cottage housing is supposed to be for all types, I, I feel like, and so, um, I don't know, it's just, it's just a word, but. Yeah, the, the community, something similar to that is actually not a bad idea, though we can define it differently than they did, 'cause it was a little interesting to me that it was so broadly defined that it could have, be a library, or, I mean, I guess that's shared community space, but, uh, yeah.
So in the memo, I did give an example, so, and we can smith this however we like, but I did say clubhouse means a shared community building, which may include uses such as, but not limited to, a multipurpose entertainment space, recreation center, community kitchen, library, workshop, or simi, similar amenity that promotes shared use in a sense of community, which is very similar to Anacortes definition, but however, we wanna tailor that to be more fitting, as you guys see fit, we can do that.
One question I did wanna ask is, for some reason, even though they disallowed ADUs in association with the cottages, they did allow one for the clu, their community building, which, what's the thinking, a caretaker, is that why?
That was my thought, I kind of had the same question, but I'm thinking, with, with how specific they got, and the types of things that would count as a shared community building, I'm like, maybe they'd wanna have someone there to oversee that space, a library, you know, I would probably want someone keeping track of where the books are going, um, a workshop, maybe someone there for safety reasons, security, who knows? Speculation.
Or even, even a guest, if you're having somebody in to do a presentation, and to be a place for them to stay, while they're doing their presentation or whatever, and without having to go out of the community and get a hotel or something.
Yeah, maybe it's a theater space, who knows? Could be anything.
I like that it's flexible.
It just seems a bit odd to have an accessory dwelling unit to a non-residential structure, because my understanding has generally been that an accessory dwelling unit is accessory to a residential primary dwelling unit, not a commercial or some other use.
And I tend to agree with that statement, typically, I would see accessories being, being ancillary to the use that is primary, so I wouldn't, yeah, I, I agree with you, it's kind of out of place, in my opinion.
I can see so many uses for it, though, I mean, you could have it on a first-come-first or sign-up basis, that, you know, if you're having somebody visit, they could stay in that unit over the common, or behind, or however you have it set up, behind the common space, and, uh, you know, it's just first, first-come-first serve, or, um, or sign up.
So maybe we don't call it an ADU, maybe we call it something else.
That's like three, at least three uses we've come up with, just here tonight, that.
Caretakers, residents, it's, we can get creative with that.
Why wouldn't you just have it as a cottage that's maybe oriented differently, or something like that? I, that would make more sense to me, if we were to consider something like that.
We had in our code that we wanted it to have an HOA, so maybe that ADU is a head of the HOA, who's kind of running the community.
Yeah, think of it kind of as the main office for multifamily apartment complex type of thing, but they live there, something like that.
I very much liked your idea that, um, there, there are some things that you need to, to, um, regulate, but other things, you know, just seem like over the, over the top, um, and so, like I, like I, I see why, if, living in Washington, you expect that most houses would have a pitched roof, but you don't have to say exactly what the pitch is. I like that they've got a, in the city of Anacortes, they've got the, um, uh, six and twelve, to twelve and six, or whatever it's called, roof pitches. That's actually in the height limits, but anyway, um, you know, it's, I agree that we shouldn't be telling them whether you use clabsards, or whether you use T-111 siding on the side of the house, I mean, that's stuff you should leave to the designer of the, of the facility that wants to, you know, put in the cottage cluster. So anyway, I like that, that it, they, they might, that we might loosen those kind of restrictions and let designers do what designers do.
Does Anacortes allow for the park models? With fixed, fixed in place? Or were they all framed in?
I don't recall that ever being specified. Assuming, yes, if it's not specifically prohibited to use them, prohibited to use them.
Didn't it address four hundred square foot minimum for the open area? And that would be the park model size, right, if I recall?
Correct, yes.
And I take it they didn't have separate design standards to go along with this, this is it?
Yeah, this, this is it, yes.
They make it simple by just saying, support compatibility with existing neighborhoods by promoting high-quality design, that could be anything that looks good. And number five, enhance the character of the residential neighborhood. Pretty, kinda leaves it wide open, make it look good.
They do have some stuff on, uh, let's see, it's their number eight, facade transparency. Transparent windows and or doors are required on at least eight percent of facades featuring the primary entrance and facing streets and common open spaces. For corner lots, the standard is only applied to the elevation containing the primary entrance. So there still are some, some things that do set expectations for high-quality appearance.
And I like the, I think they have a provision for attached garages in here.
This may be a bit of a difficult question to answer, but how, how difficult is it to, when a code is written, to be this open and subjective, when it comes to the, kind of, the couple of things that were just read there? Because then that puts it on the planning staff to kind of define and make a decision, and that, in that regard, being a little bit more specific would seem to make it a little bit easier for everybody? I mean, what, what are your thoughts as being on that side of things, and having to actually put the code into practice?
It honestly depends on what it is. When it comes to design, I tend to be more lenient with people, 'cause I like people having, and this is just my personal method of doing things, but I like people having a little bit more creative flexibility on what they wanna put up for their windows, and what they wanna put up for their shingles, you know, it's like, um, I know it's come up a few times within PRDs, where our developers run into budgeting issues, where they didn't see something coming with the utilities needing to be reworked, and so they spent extra money on that, and now they don't have quite enough to purchase their additional siding materials that are required in our PRD design standards. So what can we do to meet the intent of the design code here? You know, can we maybe enhance the landscaping a little bit more, and put up, um, like decorative lighting, or something like that, as opposed to the siding that we did get approved, but we can't afford it? So it, there are areas where we can take some discretion, and think through, what is the intent of what we're trying to achieve? Um, so I think a very clear intent statement is helpful there, um, and then adding in language that, uh, certain things are according to director's approval, uh, on a case-by-case basis, if, if there are areas where it's kind of open to interpretation. Too many of those areas can lead to problems, though, uh, 'cause then you, you do have issues with, okay, you let this person do this, I have a similar suggestion, and you're not letting me do this, where it's the consistency, you do run into issues there, so it's a fine line that you have to ride with that sort of thing.
I, I agree, you're, uh, it, it, it seems in the past that's been an issue, I know John was always about nailing everything down, because, um, because he didn't like having to negotiate, but you, that's, you're comfortable with that, so it, it works for you. But yeah, that's, um, one of those things, 'cause you can't let the developer balance his books on the standards that affect other people in surrounding neighborhoods and in the neighborhood itself, so, so it does become a, can become a vote of contention.
I tend to look at every, every case kind of in its own light, you know? If, if the person is dealing with a very tight timeline, their permit's gonna expire in two weeks, and we don't have time for them to wait to, you know, make up more money to do this later, and then I'm like, okay, maybe, let's look at some, some options to get you to where you need to be. Try to be a good, you know, ethics, ethical person.
So then it's the onus on them to demonstrate, um, why they're, like, in, in a case where the code is kind of vague like this, it's to convince you that it meets that vague definition then, and they're saying, well, because we've done A, B, and C, we can maybe cheap out on D kind of thing a little bit, you know?
I always leave the convincing to the, to the applicant, yes, it's not my job to tell them why I think they are close enough to the code, so, um, they have to, they have to give a good, uh, reasoning, and, um, yeah, a, again, it's a, it's a fine line to ride, but, um, always look at the intent.
Yeah, it's, it's never gonna be a perfect system, um, you know, you have people that over-design everything, and, uh, you could, you could, you could have nothing, and they would come up with awesome. and they would come up with awesome designs, and you could have, you could have everything nail, absolutely nailed down and there would be still somebody who will whittle through without doing, you know, half of what they're required to do. It's just the nature of the beast and, so I, I, I think, um, as someone who has done design, I, I like the idea that things are not totally free for all, but, but that they're, you're kind of in the middle where there is room to, to be creative and, and show new ideas, but, but also agree that it's always on the person who's presenting the idea to explain why this is a great idea or why this should be done or whatever, so.
I'm curious about this attached duplexes idea. Was that something that you guys were interested in as well? Cause it really changes that circle space around each dwelling.
It does, um. Let me find it first, sorry.
I just lost it, I'm sorry, I was just right there.
Attached duplex cottages are allowed in the R three, R three A, R four, and R four A zones. Yeah, essentially, as long as they don't go over their maximum number of cottages. I suppose that could be useful if you're working, say, within a higher density zone, R seven, where you've got duplexes. And, um, R fifteen, where you've got anything, you've got range from a single family duplex all the way to a multifamily apartment complexes. When you'd start putting units together like that, it might mesh a little bit more well with the existing structures in the zone.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I'm kind of thinking that basically we use the PRD kind of guidelines as a starting point for our cottage cluster, um, because we didn't have an example, now we have something like this and it's possible that we could kind of build the design things we want to see into this and potentially not have separate design standards. Was that kind of what you were?
That's my hope, yes. Uh, I like, as we were talking before with the parking standards, I like seeing everything all in one place and not having separate things referencing each other. I see this, Anacortes example is very similar to how our ADU chapter is laid out, where it's just everything listed out. It's very easy to follow, and I don't have to siphon through three different sets of regulations really to figure out what applies. So yes, that's my hope, is to kind of use Anacortes' code as, uh, maybe our new backdrop and try to wiggle in what we've worked on so far, just with the mindset of trying to simplify it more. Like how this one is laid out.
And I think we can get there, I, I think, yeah, that's, there's no reason to have it in two spots.
We have two classifications, tiny homes and cottages. Do they deal with anything like that?
They didn't make specifications, so my assumption, and I might check with Anacortes on this, um, but my assumption is that cottages is kind of an overarching thing, so it would include your park models, it would include your tiny homes. Maybe they have a separate definition laying around somewhere that I wasn't able to track down, so I'll ask them about that. But given that they didn't specifically prohibit any one or the other, I'm thinking that they do allow them.
I can't find it right now, but it seems their, their front setback was much less than ours. I think we had like twenty-five feet or something, there's.
I think we're twenty.
Twenty.
But we should be twenty-five, because you have to walk around, you have to walk around the tailgates of the big construction trucks when they're parked in front of their garages.
No, you're right about that, but I think they said you can't have parking in front of the cottage.
I'm looking at this page. Minimum setbacks from table nineteen point four two point oh two oh has setbacks from the street, setbacks from the garage, side street setbacks.
Yeah, so, so our current front setback to any public street or internal access drive is twenty feet. There, it's much less, I think ten?
What I'm looking at, so, maybe I'm looking at the wrong one. I, I'm looking at, I, I know it's Anacortes, cause it's got the yellow highlights, but it says, um, street setback, garage minimum, and it says twenty-five feet for R one, and then everything else is twenty except for, um, Old Town. But I went out and measured one over on, on, um, Sock Mountain, because, to find out that they were twenty feet, because, because I have to constantly go out into the street to go around the back ends of the, um, of the big construction trucks, you know?
Okay. I'm on. Just after that overhead photo of the cottages, underneath that it says, see standards, lot sizes. And then for setbacks and separation, the minimum setback set forth in table nineteen dot forty-two.
Yeah, it's, uh, page twelve of forty. Which only comes up when you're moving the screen.
Okay.
I apologize if the materials are kind of hard to navigate, they had so many different, click this link to the separate code thing, so I tried to include a reference page to help guide you to those different things. So ta, the table you're looking for is in the references page toward the end.
I found it. Street setback minimum, okay, oh. RS, R three A, I should say, is a setback of ten, and R four, setback of ten from the street.
Side street, from a side street.
Oh.
Yeah, it's twenty, and then, oh, I see R three, oh, you're asking why is that one ten? Yeah, yeah, okay, excellent, yeah, good question.
I guess we don't know what an R three A or R four is.
Um, so R three A is their residential medium density. R three without the A is the same thing.
And is that a true, is that a true density? I mean, like, RR five is no longer really an R five.
Good question.
I mean, they're, they're talking about medium density, but is that before or after they add on the possibility of ADUs and?
Uh, I'll have to poke around with that, cause I think their, their numbering system is different than, than our, you know, five units per acre.
I was getting excited, because if, if it's clear, I want, I want to jump to their system if, if it's, if it's more, if it's more true than our zoning system is now, so.
Somewhere it said, a cottage will count as half a house on a lot, so that would be ten in a R five instead of eighteen.
Yeah.
So you might like that part.
Yeah. I don't care, I don't care what the density is, as long as the zoning actually expresses what, the thing is, I don't want to, I don't want everybody to think they live in an R five when they live in an R eighteen. That's what I, um, that, that's what I want, I want it to be consistent, so people actually know what they're getting.
There is a bit of consistency here. If you have a house on a lot, you can have an ADU, so there's two. Or you can have two cottages on that same lot, so.
That's pretty cool.
It's kind of the same thing.
And, and the rea, the reason I bring that up about the zoning is that, is that, um, for, since I've been on the planning commission, when you looked at a zone, you knew what the density was, you know, and you were advertising exactly what was gonna get built there. But now it doesn't do that, and so, um, we need to come up with a new way of doing it, so that, um, so that what we're advertising is what people are getting when they, when they move into the neighborhood, right? You think you're moving into a, where it's gonna be this dense, and you find out later that it's actually three times denser because of two ADUs and and the thing, and that's kind of false advertising from my, my point of view, so I'd like to get back to, to, uh.
Are you thinking something like more generic titling for the zoning? So like, kind of how, how they have this, their, um, residential medium density. So, our R seven zone might turn into something like that, medium density.
That would be okay, as long as we define what, what that is, what, what the medium density entails, and it looks, it looks like they do in theirs, so.
I think that's a separate topic than this, so.
Right, zonings are different.
I did want to point out, I thought it was interesting in their minimum setbacks table. They have an interior side setback for upper floors, so that's meaning the distance, I believe, between, if you have a second story, how, how close together your second story can be from the second story of another building.
I totally get that, it's, that's fire, right, and, and, and they used to do that in, uh, in New England in the old days, and in, and in your, all over Europe, right? You had to, you had to, you had the se, uh, separation at street level and then you had, and then, or between the houses, and then on the second floor, they would bump them out with a little, little cantilever, right, and, uh, all the way around the house, that's why, so they'd go up and then they'd go out and then they'd go up again.
Yeah, it got me thinking about our, our setbacks, we don't specify that.
Yeah.
Not in our code.
Uh, we have five, five, it's the fire code, says that, uh, that you have to have five between your house and the property line, so that makes a ten-foot buffer between, between houses.
Yeah. Yeah, we say five feet on each side and they say ten pe, ten feet between dwellings. It's basically the same thing.
Yeah, it's just in our fire code. You have to do the jump.
Not my department.
Well, being the clock watcher that I am, I'm just reminding everyone it's after eight thirty. So, um, we can keep going, or we can, uh, decide to table it till next month and do our, do some more research and come up with questions and answers.
Yeah, I've, I've got some, some good feedback. I'm gonna take a stab at it, shared community building, if we want to go with that name, or something else.
Community center, community. They have it written here.
Yeah.
Community, shared community building.
Yeah.
The SCB.
I like it, yeah, but I'll, I'll take a stab at creating something for us there, um, see how we like it, and, I'm gonna try to rework this, um, kind of, it'll be kind of a big rewrite, but to streamline it to be more like Anacortes' code. I'm gonna get rid of the design standards and guidelines chapter and work it into this, so it's all in one place.
And what, what's the timeline on this one? Uh, are, are we gonna bring this back a couple more times, or would you like everything back next time, ideas, or?
That's a good question. It depends on how much more discussion we take on. So I do, I do want to go in depth into the incentive stuff. I think, um, the affordable housing thing is complex and we do need to talk that through. Um, so I will ask that you all take a real good deep dive into the link I've provided to MRSC, cause that has all sorts of different examples from jurisdictions that have tried a number of different strategies. And just seeing what we think would work best for our cottage housing as incentive, to incentivize affordable housing. Cause what I was hearing from you guys from the past was density is not the way to go. We should find another way to do this, because as we were talking about before, if we don't incentivize, how can we make sure these are going to be truly affordable over time?
Can I float an idea before we quit for the night?
Yes.
We've talked about various ways to make things affordable in the housing market, and something came to my mind today, and it could be totally undoable, but I don't know how to bring this up. Okay, the community of Shelter Bay, the people there own the hu, their houses, but they don't own the land, they lease it. So would it be an incentive for builders, rather than a builder to have to buy the land, they could build the houses and the land owner leases it to the people living there? So that people aren't buying the land and the house, they're just buying the house.
It's very similar to how a mobile home park is set up.
I just wanted to float it for that to go through people's noggin's, cause a land owner would be more freely, he would give up his land freer if, well, that's the wrong word, he would be happy to give up his land if he could maintain that land as his own, or her own, the person's own. And, uh, the builder's happy, cause he doesn't have to buy it. The people living in the houses are happy, cause they don't have to buy the land and the house, but they have a house that's sixty percent of what the cost of a house would be. But I don't know if there's a mechanism for that, I guess it would be a community-owned or personally-owned land.
Yeah, it kind of sounds like a land trust.
They actually do that, they actually do that in Europe. I've been watching some things, and they actually do that in Europe. It's a really, really old thing, but you can have, you can own a piece of property and you can own all the buildings on the property, or you can own the land and you can own a building on the, on your, on the, on your land, but you could have another one that you just sell the footprint of the house to the person, so they don't have to buy all the land, they just have to buy the footprint that their house sits on, and you don't own that. Um, and so you have, the reason I, I heard about it was because people got into these situations where they went to, to Europe and bought property and they thought they were buying the houses too, and found out that they were buying the property and maybe some of the buildings, but some buildings on the property did not belong to them, and they go, you know, were like, hey, you gotta get out, so I can remodel the house, and it's like, no, we own the house. You, you bought the land and the, and the building, so anyway, um, it can be confusing, but it's, uh, it's an interesting idea and probably created for the same, same reason you're talking about.
Maybe.
Yeah, interesting idea.
But just something to dwell about.
What was the example you shared?
Shelter Bay, in La Conner, that is called leased land. There's two lands, there's fee simple, where you own the land and the, whatever's on it, and the sky above it, or you can be in a leased land where you pay an HOA and you can own the house, but you can't own the land. And you can sell that house, but you just can't sell the land. And what happens is you, you, the houses in Shelter Bay are much cheap, not much, but they are cheaper than the normal house for that reason.
I think they belong to the tribe.
It does, but I don't think.
It's a hundred year, yeah, a hundred-year lease.
Yeah. So they're not giving up their land, but they're letting people use it, so.
But why can't that be standard in a city? Not everywhere, but a certain amount of the city could be leased land by private owners or corporations.
Definitely worth looking into.
Equity on the land and not the people who are living in the house.
And another bonus would be, they could have, the HOA, you could have caretakers, so the people don't have to maintain their yards if they don't want to be more of a condominium type of thing, but they have a house. So elderly, young people. So elderly, young people, they're working all the time, they don't have to come on and mow their lawn, it's already done for them, something to think about.
And you're not paying property taxes on the land, just the house.
You know, that too, and as a bonus, the person leasing the land, if he didn't, or she didn't have to pay property taxes, or got lowered ones because they're helping the community, then they're really going to want to give up their land to start building.
Good idea.
Incentives, just different incentives.
Yeah, good discussion.
Thank you, I've got some homework to do.
Anyone in favor of tabling, or more to say?
Oh, just one final thing, and I'm sure you were already looking at this, and we're going to be doing a lot of re, reworking, but just if there's any way to simplify the open space stuff. I know we were trying to work in maybe some density bonus or something, or maybe I'm off there, but yeah, it's just, it feels very overly complex, so...
I'm on it.
Sorry, I don't have better direction than that, but...
Commissioner DuVoyne, anything before we table this?
I guess there's a question. What is it that... I'm trying to figure out the seven streets, and then to figure out what, is it going to get to the public hearing? I mean, I'm trying to figure out what I need to do to clarify what's wrong with this. By the next meeting, it'd be another burden for us to be, to be...
Yeah, so at this time, we're talking through, just discussing this very preliminary draft of things. I like to get this as close as possible to something that we feel is ready to present to the council for approval before we move to a public hearing. But we're not there yet, so, so we're going to rework this, and, you know, the more research that gets done behind the scenes by the planning commissioners, and the more you review my stuff, just with a fine-tooth comb, find anything that you feel like doesn't work, or needs fine-tuning, or needs a definition, anything like that is helpful to me.
Do we need to raise that in the meeting, or should we write them down and send them to you?
That's, that's all things you should discuss here with the planning commissioners at this, at this meeting, during the discussion period. So when I send you the meeting materials on Fridays, take those, make notes, so that you know what you might want to bring up for your discussion at the following planning commission meeting.
All right, thank you. I'm just trying to get into your role now. What, what, you answered a question, where are we going with this? I know it's a simple question, but you answered it, thank you.
Yes.
And then just a note that the MRSC link didn't seem to be working for me in the, and since I was on my iPad, I didn't have a chance to go type it in, I'll do that on my computer, but I don't know if anybody else had any problem, maybe it's just me.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try sending it to the general email too, maybe it was just an issue having it be...
I think it just wasn't hyperlinked, and so, and...
I think I'm the good image.
Okay.
And if that still doesn't work, you could try, just go to the MRSC website and kind of follow the, the subject matter here.
Yeah, once I'm on my laptop, it'll be, if nothing else, I can just type it in.
Yeah.
Copy and paste the URL.
Anything else before I close unfinished business? Okay. We'll go ahead and do our homework on the proposed amendments, and come up with more questions and answers next month on cottage clusters. And that's close of unfinished business, 8:42, new business.
Yes.
We have Mr. Glover.
We are continuing on with our comp plan update process. We are ready to meet with you to talk about the vision statement for the comp plan. And talking with our consultant team today, what we'd like to do is, is devote all, or at least most of one of your sessions to this matter. And you're looking at dates and going ahead, we're looking at the December meeting to do this. That date would be December 17th, which is the third Tuesday of the month. If by then we're rolling along and it looks like we have a full agenda for other stuff, we could have another meeting on December 10th, which is the Tuesday before. Hopefully, we don't have to have two meetings in one month, and hopefully we can do it all in one meeting. But anyway, I wanted to offer those two dates for you, if either of those work. The other reason I'm offering an earlier date is I know that as we get on into December, we start preparing for holidays and, and we get, you know, people go on vacations or whatever, and so I wanted to ask you guys tonight if you would like for me to set December 10th or December 17th for this work, this work session on vision statement?
Either one for me.
Either one.
They're both Tuesday nights?
Yes, they are, yeah.
I know, I want to log your party, we meet on the second Tuesday. If I were to have a call for December 10th.
Okay.
I could go on to one, one of the other, but not both.
Yeah, okay, okay, sure. Okay. Well, if you're, if you, if you're not leaving town on December 17th, we could stick with that regular third Tuesday of our...
I'm in, I'm in the school, so I'll be here till 22nd, I think, or something, so...
Okay, okay, then we'll aim for December 17th, and what we're looking at doing is having what they call a charrette, and we might set it up where we have the roundtable format and some paper in front of you, and they present some of the ideas and feedback that we got from the surveys, and then help us walk through the process of coming up with a vision statement. It could take some time and, and, but that's okay, and we want to make sure that you guys all have an opportunity to weigh in on that. This would be open to the public too, because it's a public meeting, but we really struggle with having a whole separate charrette available to the entire community, and I think to do that, you'd have to pick a Saturday and just plan on eight hours, I think that's probably asking a whole lot. So we'd like to try this, a couple hours at a planning commission meeting on, on the 17th.
Are you going to bring this stuff back and do a, and do a charrette on the...
I'm sorry?
Are you going to bring back the, the, the...
Consultants?
Yeah. And do the charrette.
The, the, I'm sorry, the cluster, the, okay, so that will be on, on the meeting on the 23rd, or November?
Oh, okay.
But, yeah, what date, 19th, isn't it?
Okay, so we're just doing the charrette on the 17th?
Yes. That's what I would prefer, yeah.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Would that be considered a regular meeting then, or, yeah?
Yeah, it would be a regular meeting, we could also call it a workshop, but it would, it would be, for legalese, it would be a meeting.
Do we need to do any special noticing of this?
I'll check on that.
Being a little bit different? I don't know.
I'll check on that, because I, I know in my past jobs, we would notice a public workshop is what we call it versus a public meeting, but there, by now, there might not be that difference. I'll talk with Nikki.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have anything, new business? Did everyone have a chance to see the video that was, the YouTube video that you sent the link to? That was pretty good.
Oh, for the...
For the city?
Yeah, that was, that was a video that Charlie and the mayor worked on with a production company. It was pretty cool, want to thank our actors here.
Yeah, yeah, we want autographs.
I know, did you see Nicole on the skateboard and Ashton on the bike, along with Julie, who's also in our department? Yeah, that was pretty cool, wasn't it? And then the video was presented at the annual conference of ICMA, which is the International City County Managers Association, I think it was in Pittsburgh, along with a bunch of other cities that had done the same thing, so we were right in there with some other cities, I thought that was really cool. Yeah.
Good job. So, anyone? 8:48, we're done with new business, any one want to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Sexton makes a motion to adjourn at 8:48, do I have a second? Commissioner DuVoyne, second it, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I was supposed to ask if there's any further comment? Okay.
Too late, me.
Too late. We're adjourned at 8:48.